Order, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has cause notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dye.
Here.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here.
Good evening, everybody, everyone who is here and those who are watching from home. Tonight, we're going to start off with a board presentation. I would like to introduce Ms. Judy Nie and Ms. Robin Knapp from Alphabet's Before and After Care Program.
Okay, if we remove this up here or no? Is that good for you? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. My name is Judy Nie. I'm the CEO of Alphabet Education, and with me is Robin Knapp. Robin is one of our four area managers here in New Jersey, and Robin oversees Ridgewood, Saddle Brook, and Bogota for us, in addition to the rest of our team who oversee some of our other programs here. We want to thank you for having us here tonight, and we're going to keep our presentation pretty brief and allow you some time for question and answer. So we'll just first get you a little bit familiar with us. So the most important thing in before and after-school care and in any childcare program, obviously, is licensing, safety, security, staffing, et cetera. We're going to talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. But building upon a base of that, what Alphabet is really known for is our content, our curriculum, our enrichment for students. We believe in connecting students to one another. We believe in creativity and learning. That is a passion of ours, and you'll see as we go through this that we've got a pretty exciting curriculum for students to engage in. So right off the bat, here's where we work in New Jersey. Now Alphabet is about 15 years old. We were incorporated in 2005. Our parent company is Kaplan Early Learning Company in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. So we've been in operation for about 16, almost 17 years now. In New Jersey, we began in 2017 and have grown pretty significantly during that time. We began operating after-school enrichment classes here in New Jersey in about 50 schools, and then those districts started to ask us to offer full before and after-care programs as well as summer programs. So these are the districts we're currently in. I hope most of you can see these slides. We started in 2017 in Stanhope and most recently have brought on Mount Arlington and Lynnhurst and Lakewood just this year. So we are now in about 16 school districts here in New Jersey, and I think that represents over 50 individual schools, probably getting close to 60 now. Let me try this one. How's this? Better? Thank you. Don't feel so tethered either. Thank you. Let me just make sure. Okay, so as I said, building upon our safe, secure structure, which we'll talk about in a moment, here are the kinds of things you can expect at Alphabet. Students will rotate through a variety of enrichment experience, including the arts, technology and STEM, fitness, wellness, and world language and culture as well. This, I always tell people, is my favorite slide in the presentation. So these are all the folks we partner with to bring this curriculum into students in the non-school hours. I'm just going to highlight a couple for you. So for example, in our world languages portion, which is not teaching a foreign language the way you would learn it in school, conjugating verbs, et cetera, it's much more exposure through a very engaging, exciting, fun curriculum. That curriculum was developed by Global Language Project out of New York City. They were working with after-school enrichment programs in the city and developing foreign language for them, and so we contracted with them, and they developed curriculum for us as well. Over here, we've got Drama Notebook. They are out of Portland, Oregon, and there are thousands of dramatic activities, plays, et cetera, that our students get to engage with as we incorporate that into our curriculum. One of my favorites is Fable Vision Learning here. They are out of Boston. Can you hear me still? Sit back on. Okay. They're out of Boston, the top floor of the Boston Children's Museum. Peter and Paul Reynolds, who were the illustrators of the Judy Moody series, developed this company, and they have developed a program in digital animation, et cetera, so we use that in our arts program as well. Of course, we've got First Lego League here, many of you are familiar with. Alphabet has an exclusive partnership with First, and we access their curriculum and bring it into our program in a non-competitive version for elementary students. I think the last I'll highlight before I move on is Art in Action. This is a nonprofit out of California, and probably 25 or 30 years ago, when art was removed from the schools, this company, nonprofit, was born by teachers and parents to bring art, learning about the masters, into classrooms through fun, hands-on, exciting, creative projects for students. So they learn everything from Michelangelo to what is street graffiti. So that's a good one. So we're really proud of our partners and really emphasize this in all of our programs. So here's what this all looks like in Alphabet. Let's say we're here, entering our third quarter of the year. If you walk into a program, you might see on Monday, fitness programming, could be yoga, basketball, could be cricket. Last year, we partnered with the World Cricket Association and brought that into our programs. The kids loved it. So they might have fitness on Monday, drama on Tuesday, Japanese culture on Wednesday, stop-motion animation on Thursday, and then on Friday, we set up our programs as a maker zone where students have challenges, lots of materials to work with, and kind of that open-ended creativity programming. We alternate our maker zones with social-emotional learning. I think, as you know now more than ever, students really need to kind of reengage with one another, and so we've got a great curriculum out of Second Step, which has been around for years, for social-emotional learning. This is what a typical day is going to look like. I'm going to let Robin talk about this in a moment, but all that I've just talked about, oops, is here in the third block of the day. So if you think about after-school, this is how students would come in and work through their day. So in addition to all of the curriculum we've just talked about, of course, there's snack, homework, a little bit of outdoor time recreation, when the weather permits, homework support, et cetera. But Robin, I'll let you tell them a little bit about what a day would look like.
Sure, sure. Can you all hear me? Can you hear me okay? Okay, perfect. So I'm Robin Knapp. I'm actually the area manager here in Bergen County, as Judy did say, for Saddle Brook, Bogota, and Ridgewood. I've been doing this for probably about 30 years. I started my career with after-school programming when I was like 18 years old and worked my way all the way up to where I am today. So one of the things I can tell you is that we like to keep the kids very busy, but we also like to hear them and understand what it is with their likes and their needs. Can you hear me? Okay. So again, when kids come in to us, first and foremost, the most important thing throughout that day is really to make sure that we actually have everyone that is on the attendance roster that day. That's key because we want to make sure that everyone did arrive to the program safely and that we're working with the schools. If someone didn't work, or I should say, didn't arrive to class or to our after-school program, that we're following up on those children to make sure that they are in a safe place. So we do use a communication tool called Remind. We send a lot of messages out to families, so we're able to communicate with that. We do have cell phones at all of our centers, so I always tell my families that if someone's not going to be coming the next morning, and it's 3:00 in the morning because maybe they're throwing up, they're not feeling well, they may have a fever, text the site, and that way we know that they're not coming, and it's off of their plate, and they can go on and continue their day too. Once our attendance is done, then of course, we make sure that we provide them with a snack and a little bit of recreation as well, because we do want them to have a little bit of free time, and their free choice too, right? They're going to come, and they're going to socialize with their friends, they're going to find out how their school day was. It's great conversation while they're eating. Once that is done, you know, everyone's, you know, parents are very different, the kids are very different too, the expectations surrounding homework are different. So we like to speak to the parents, involve the parents, and what is your expectation? Do you want your children to do their homework with us? Do you want them to start it with us, or would you prefer that they do it at home? So we want to involve you guys as well, because that's an important piece too. And then, of course, we do, you know, as Judy said, we do brain games, Block Three, depending upon the time. Typically, in my programs, we take a look at the flow, the ebbs and flows of when parents are picking up, because we want the children to get the most out of our curriculum and the most out of our day. If we find a lot of kids are going home between 5:00 and 5:30, we'll try to get homework started a little bit earlier and then also start those activities so that we can do them between 4:00 and 5:00 so the kids can take part. We oftentimes find that when children are being picked up and they're in the middle of maker space or they're in the middle of a fitness activity or a technology activity, they don't want to go home. So we like to kind of coordinate and look at the ebbs and flows of the times for pickup. And then, you know, extended days, you know, we do, we do offer the special interest clubs as well as current events and service learning too. So that's pretty much that, but can I ask? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So we'll move on to the next slide, which is Staff for Success. This is so important, and I can tell you that in my 30 years' career, we've had some rock stars, and we haven't had any rock stars. So I like to say that the best part of this is really staffing. I staff my programs with people that meet my culture and what I want to have delivered to my programs. I work very closely with all my teams as well. I always say, and you've heard me say it too, is being present and in the moment is really important to me, because if I'm present and in the moment at all my centers, and I'm showing up and I'm supporting them, they all support us with Alphabet, providing a great, a great environment for the children to be in. Okay, so you know, Training for Success, so we're, it's required and monitored, right? So we are, we are regulated by the state of New Jersey, right? So we do have a license, so there's regulations that we do need to follow with regards to making sure that the children are safe. We do offer PBIS, and I'll talk more about that with health and safety, the background checks and things like that as we move on to additional slides. But PBIS is really important. So I'm losing my track. What, it's, it's positive behavior, right, positive behavior intervention and supports. So what we want to do is we want the children to buy into the program. We want to provide them with some rewards and incentives, because we want to make sure that everyone's being kind and respectful, and we are a family while we're in after-care, right, in Alphabet. So we want to make sure that the kids are buying into that, and we are creating different things that they want to do, that they want to implement, things that maybe they're struggling with, but we give positive reinforcements for that as well. So it could be something as simple as maybe a pizza party, they're working, they're trying to attain certain number of tickets or stars or something like that, so it's a group effort. And then the expectation of behavior is across the board for everybody, being kind, being respectful, helping others. So this way, it's all incorporated into our program, and the children are participating in it. So let's see, collaboration mandatory, state reporting system, and more. Yeah?
Okay. Thank you, Robin.
So I want to add a piece here about staffing. I think, you know, we all know how difficult the employment market is today. We have really doubled down at Alphabet and added to our recruitment team and are very carefully monitoring all of the folks that we recruit. Robin's going to talk a moment about background check and screening, et cetera, but when it comes to training, one of the things we do early on is make sure that prior to starting with Alphabet, so pre-service, there are certain trainings that staff go through, as well as in their first two weeks on the job, et cetera. One of those, of course, is our mandatory state reporting system, reporting signs and symptoms of child neglect, abuse, et cetera. We go through with, as Robin said, with the positive behavior supports and behavior management. What is appropriate behavior management techniques with students? Our SEL curriculum works with that as well. But we find that our training, obviously, is, is key and critical. We do it in a combination of in-person as well as some webinars and online. This one, I'm, I'm really excited to talk about. Kids Included Together is really the foremost inclusivity program for out-of-school time or youth development programs in the country. They are based in California, and other than Alphabet, their largest client is the U.S. military. So the U.S. military, every one of their child and family youth, early childhood programs are connected to KIT, Kids Included Together. There's a couple of things that happens with KIT. One is they have just state-of-the-art training for dealing with accommodations and inclusion, working with special needs children. We absolutely take special needs children into our programs, and rarely are we not able to accommodate the needs of children. We work on accommodation plans, we have training through KIT, and what's really incredible about KIT is that they have a 24/7 call-in line. The military calls in from all over the world at all hours of the day, as you can imagine, and with our contract with them, our staff can now do that as well. So if Robin is working with a site director and they have a challenge with a student in the program, they can actually get on the line, talk to an inclusion specialist, get some support and feedback, get some trainings assigned to that staff, and off we go. So that's really been a huge help for us this year. Robin, you want to talk about safety?
Sure, sure. So background checks. So when we hire people, we obviously have them go through the interview. Can you hear me? It's, okay. We go through the interview process, of course, we just want to make sure that they are a good match for our program, for the children, the staff that are currently working there, as well as for the school district. So we do carry, a carry is a, is a background check along with the fingerprintings, which is the CRE that's, that's referenced up there, and those do have to be done prior to anybody starting onsite. We want to make sure that we have those records on file in their staffing files, because we do have to have certain things on file for state licensing when they come to audit us to ensure that we are following protocols and procedures. The other thing that we do is pass the trash. I don't know if you guys are familiar with pass the trash. We certainly want to make sure that we're reaching out to have past employers share information that this employee is going to be working for us, and if there's anything that we need to know, and if they would recommend them working in a school-age setting, working with children, if that's their recommendation. If it's not, then certainly we don't move, we won't move forward with anybody like that. But we do go after those, we do keep those on file, and we want to make sure that we're following protocols. When it comes to head counts, Alphabet does head counts every 30 minutes. We want to make sure that we're tracking our numbers, who's in our program. If we start with 20, we do another head count 30 minutes later, because if Johnny was picked up by mom, now our head count goes from 20 down to 19. So we're always doing that, and the staff are always communicating. So if Judy and I were working together, I'd say, we started with 20, one went home, we have 19, and we'll say together, we have 19. We want to make sure everyone is present and accounted for. The staff tablets are really the iPads. The iPads are really our home base. We keep paper-based emergency files on each of the children. However, our staff do use a tablet to check children in and out. That tablet is available also to look up important information with regards to the emergency contacts for the children, as well as we can also track our attendance on there, and then as we move them and transition them from one activity to another, we can also transition them and know how many kids are going to be in the gym, and how many kids are going to be in the music room or the art room or whatever the activity is that's happening. Emergency plans and drills, this is really important. We do two fire drills a month, one for the morning program and one for the after-school program. Their technically licensing views them when it comes to drills as two separate programs. So there are kids that go to the before-school program that don't otherwise go to after-school, so it's important that everybody understands how to evacuate the building and where they're supposed to go during a fire drill in the mornings as well as the afternoon. So you'll see two that are logged each month, AM and PM, on our rosters. And then also the emergency plans. We work really closely with a lot of the state licensors. They come, they audit. One of the things that we will be working with you guys on is making sure that we're aware of what policies and procedures do you do during the school day with regards to the space that we're in. We want to offer continuity and consistency, because the kids are in your care during the day, and then they're with us. We don't want to change what your plans are, we want to adopt them and incorporate them into our program as well, because that's what makes sense. And the emergency plans do include lockdowns. You guys do lockdowns throughout the school year, we're also required to do a lockdown. So we will practice those. Maybe we're not going to do the bells and whistles like you do at school, but we will do a lockdown and we'll make, make, we won't tell the kids it's happening, but we'll go to our, our specific spot for, for being safe during those lockdowns. Doorbells. We have these doorbells that we can attach to the outside of the school. So if, say, say we were scheduled to be in here for the day, and this is typically where parents pick up, but we're not going to be here that day because we traveled to another room because this one's being used, just saying that as an example, parents can ring that doorbell, it'll go directly to us, and we know somebody's at the door. We always want to make sure that people aren't coming in the building, and that doorbell is very, very helpful. And then parent checkout. So one of the other key things that we do with the iPads is that at the time of registration, parents are able to set up a specific code that they use, that's specific to the mom, specific to the dad or grandma, whoever's going to be picking up, and that is an added check for us, so that we check ID, but they also have their code. So once we get to know those families, they're checking their children out using that code. If there's any issue, problem, or concern, we can look back and see who picked up that day. So those are all really important features of our program as well.
So all of this sounds great, and how do we get this done quickly? Well, you see a timeline here that goes from January to June, and ideally, you'd have four or five months to get licensed and staffed up and trained and material and supplies ordered and ready to go. If we were to work with you here, that would not be the case. We have been known in New Jersey and in other places to get up and running within four weeks, assuming that we can hire staff quickly. We're very familiar with New Jersey licensing. We actually know the licenser for this area, have worked with her in, in other settings. So we think we can get this going pretty quickly. Of course, it's a matter of staffing. We want the very best staff for you here, and so any recommendations from the school district, if there are folks currently involved with or working with children that are recommended, we're more than happy to take that. But as I said, we have a dedicated recruiter who will be looking immediately upon awards. So you can see, we would be awarded the contract, licensing would be immediately the next morning underway, as well as a recruitment, an ad would go out immediately, we'd begin to hire and train staff. We then would have a parent information session on all of our offerings and our procedures, et cetera. That could be done by Zoom in-person when we can, but certainly can be done by Zoom. Delivery and setup materials happens quickly, and then we get the doors open and going as quickly as we can. We'd like to make it as smooth and efficient a transition as possible. And all I really have to say about the fees is that we, Alphabet will charge the same fees as parents are currently paying. So whatever the, as you, this, that's what this reflects here, any discounts, any, any monthly fees, whatever is charged currently, we're going to continue to charge. I think parents have become used to that. They've already paid a registration fee for a service this year. They will not be charged a registration fee with Alphabet. We just want to kind of smoothly pick up and move on if, if we begin to work with you. And that's it, in a nutshell. Again, thank you for having us. We're here for questions and answers if the board or superintendent would like, and nice to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy and Robin.
Do you have any questions?
Yes. Yes.
Can I just ask you a question? So as far as staffing issues go, do you have any current issues with getting people with your situation, your other districts right now, like recruitment?
You know, it's, it's more difficult now than it's, should I go here?
You can use it, yeah.
Okay. Of course, it's more difficult now as it is everywhere than it ever has been before. But again, we have really focused on this. We've had to, to reopen after COVID, and we are pretty, we're having pretty much luck here getting staffed. We don't have a significant shortage of staff now. Of course, we had a wave of COVID, as everyone knows, all the schools did, and had a number of staff out in the last couple of weeks, but we don't anticipate not being able to staff the program to open. That's not been our history right now.
And then what do you, do you have like a supervisor in the building and then X amount of staff members to X amount of staff?
Yes. Great question. Thank you. So we have a regional director here for New Jersey. Her name is Jeanette, Jeanette Reizdeck, who would be here tonight, but she's, she was out of town with a family situation. So we have a regional director who oversees all of our four area managers. Robin is one of those. An area manager would oversee the district here, and then each building would have its own site director who is dedicated to managing that site, and then students would be staffed to the licensing ratio.
Does the site manager rotate from site to site, like, or you have a site manager on each site?
Yes, on each site, and they report to the area manager.
Can I just ask something? Go ahead.
So when it comes to the site directors, there is a specific one at each of the locations. However, the way I operate my districts is that I always want to make sure that I can cover different sites, and if something does come up, that my staff are all familiar with one another, and I always make sure that policies, procedures, the way that we, we run our programs are very much the same at every school. So if someone did have to step in an emergency, the systems are all the same. But I think that cross-training is often, is very helpful, and then the parents become familiar with the different staff as well, and so do the kids. So if that is the case, there's a level of comfort for all parties.
Where, where are your recruiters typically looking for, for their, are they looking for education major, education majors? Are they going into colleges? Where are they typically looking for their staff?
Those are ideal options, all of the above. So, you know, there's a nice college not far from here. I would assume that, you know, that might be a place we'd look early on. Certainly, anyone within the district who's interested in working additional hours after school, be it a teacher, a paraprofessional, colleges, and then local community members as well. Sometimes we'll have some retired people, retired teachers in there as well, but typically, it's a blend of, you know, paraprofessionals, college students, community members, maybe parents. We do offer free childcare for parents who work for us, who can bring their children for free as well. And as you can imagine, we've had to be pretty creative with, you know, hiring bonuses and salary, et cetera, at this point.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
No. No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Can they maybe hang for a little bit in case any of the?
Sure.
Yeah, the public have any questions?
Judy, do you want to just stand, just if the public has a question?
Oh, sure. Happy to. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. Can I have a motion for B1 and B2, please?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Hi.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay. Before we move on to open public comments, I just wanted to say one thing. I wanted to, the Board of Ed would like to take this opportunity to thank the administration and the teachers who work diligently to provide some relief to our families who depend on the before and after care. The board and the community appreciate your dedication to our students and our families. So I just want to take that time to thank everybody again. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting to the public comment for any items on or off the agenda. I have one person who signed up, but if there is anyone else in the audience tonight who does have a question regarding the potential program, please feel free to come to the mic. We'll start with Kathy Palamara. Please state your name and your address, please.
Hello, Kathy Palamara, 285 Ridge Road. I think my big concern right now, so I have a set of twins, they just turned 10. When I received the email on Saturday about what had happened, my heart sank, because, you know, you, these are our children. So I guess my question is for you. When you do brick, back... When you do background checks and, like, everybody is double-checked, triple-checked, quadruple-checked because you don't want, you know, you're leaving your precious children in, in the care of somebody and, like, they're your, I, I don't want to speak for every parent, but I think I can, where our children are our precious gifts. And to have something like this rock our community, like, it's, it was just, it broke me. So I think that's just my big concern and probably, I'm sure, a lot of parents that are listening, just making sure that the security and if there's going to be, is there going to be like a manager on site, like, that's with your program? And the big thing is just security, just knowing that I'm leaving my child, my child's going to be there, he's going to be safe, you know? I think that's just my, my, my big concern, so, thank you.
Absolutely, Kathy. Yes, so Robin and I are both parents. As you can imagine, many of our, our staff are. We certainly understand this. The business we're in is critically important and also, you know, scary. I mean, it's, these things unfortunately can happen. As we described earlier, every background check level is done. I'll, I'll let Robin go a little bit deeper into that because she does that every day here. But in addition to that, what happens when you background check somebody, you only know what they've done in the past, right? It's, we're not sure what could happen in the future. And that's why things like head counts every 30 minutes to know where everyone is so that folks aren't, you know, disappearing is critical, and monitoring staff is critical. I'm happy to say that we have not had this kind of situation in our program in 15 years. I can tell you that there have been people who have left, worked for us years ago, and then we've gotten a call saying there was an incident somewhere else. Fortunately, it's not happened to us and we take it very, very seriously and supervise very closely. So certainly understand, you know, your concern and, and comment. I think that's all of our, that's what keeps us up at night. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Robin, you want to talk about... Sure. So as far as the background checks go, licensing also just really something that's new this year. Years ago, when you got fingerprinted, you got fingerprinted once and it was one and done. They just introduced something now where when you get relicensed, everybody onsite has to have a background check and another fingerprinting clearance as well. So that's something that's new that we were actually just talking about the other day because it is recent news. So we do keep up with the trends and the times and any new notifications that we need to be aware of. To answer your question, though, one of the things that Alphabet does too is that if there are two staff people onsite, we recommend that they both are staying in the same rooms, right? So our ratio is 1 to 15. However, there might be times that the kids might go to the gym. We want two staff people to always be with those children at all times for reasons like that. Because typically if something's going to happen, it's going to happen when somebody else isn't present and in the moment, right? In speaking for myself, the way I manage my teams, I like to be present and in the moment. You will see me there. I opened three districts in the last two years here in Bergen County, as you heard me mention, and a lot of the administration are like, wow, you really are here. I like to spend a lot of times with my teams because the only way that you're really going to get to know their personalities and see something that might be uncomfortable or something that you're not, you want to coach, you want to mentor, you want to direct, and you want to address issues and problems head-on. So it's important for me to get to know my team, hire people that are the right fit, and also, again, pay close attention to detail. So as a mom, as Judy said, like, it, it does very much hit home. I have a 13-year-old and it's, it's, it's hard when you hear stories like that. But please know, as Judy said, a lot of our staff have been with us for a long time. I've been in the community for a really long time. When it comes to staffing, we do look for professionals. We look for people that have a, a passion to work in this field. We don't look for people that don't have that passion or that drive or the desire to be here. We want to make sure it's, it's a really good fit. Okay? You're welcome.
If I can add one last thing because I think it is really important and it's kind of hot off the presses. What I didn't say when I talked about our curriculum is that every one of our instructors has a monitor, like a TV monitor, an iPad, and all of our curriculum is sort of blended learning. So we've got an, you, you literally plug and play. You turn it on, someone introduces a lesson, if it's Japanese art, what have you. Stop that, pause that, the instructor works with the students. What we're looking into now is actually placing a camera on those monitors so that we can see at any time as well, we could plug into any of them and see what's happening in the room, in the classroom as well. So it's more of a two-way as opposed to just delivering to students, so.
I just wanted to clarify something because I think it's important for the public to know. Can you explain Pass the Trash? I mean, I understand what that legislation is about, about how when you, you approach a district, if there was something in that district, they have to notify you about that.
Yes.
Maybe just explain that to the public a little bit more because that's something that is new that you have to, you just can't, that district can't just pretend that nothing...
No, no, they have to. Whether, whether that staff person worked at a childcare center or in a public school or any, anything having to do with the children, we have to actually, we send that Pass the Trash to them. They have to complete it and send it back to us. We need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence because if they've already worked with children before, I think that we all have, as you all know, we have a moral obligation to share. If someone isn't qualified or has some kind of a history, we need to share it to keep all the children safe and give all the parents a great peace of mind.
So what happens is that if they are hiring someone from another school district or another place, if there was something that went on in that district, they have an obligation, a legal obligation to notify them about it. It's not something they can just, oh, not mention it.
No, and we keep, we keep those returns, we keep them on file as well so that we have documentation of that. One of the, one of the other school districts that we actually have, you know, again, if one of the school districts asked that you guys, that they wanted to have our fingerprints and carries because they wanted to confirm and give you guys all peace of mind that we actually did it and that they saw it and that they keep it on file. So every time I hire somebody, then I share that information with the district, including mine and, and other people that would be working there, so that they have a peace of mind knowing that everybody did get their clearances done appropriately, as well as keeping the Pass and Trash, the Pass the Trash for each of those staff members.
Thank you.
Mr. Shoner, I just want to just add to that. I mean, that, that, as a public school, we encounter that all the time. The other piece of it is that you can't lie on that. You'll, you, the entity would be held liable for that. So it's, like you said, it's a legal, it's not only a moral obligation like you stated, but it is a legal obligation as well.
Do you, do you have a ratio of pupil, pupil to monitor, you know, do you have that ratio? Is there a monitor for every, so many students?
So our ratio is 1 to 15. And then what we typically do, like, when the kids are also going to the bathrooms, things like that, we usually travel as a whole group and then we'll do the bathrooms that way, too. Nobody ever leaves our program unattended. If we're going outside, we all go outside together. There's a leader in the front of the line, leader in the back of the line. We communicate those head counts as we talked about. If we're going to the bathroom, same thing. We'll all stand in line, the girls are in one line, the boys are on the other, and that way they can all go in the bathroom. And speaking of bathrooms, too, I prefer that all of my teams only let like one or two children in the bathroom at a time, depending upon how many stalls there are, of course, because I don't want six kids in a bathroom either. We need to monitor that very closely as well.
Hi, Christina Dugan, 55 Skytop Road. My question is about your partners. Now, do you have outside people come or do your partners train your staff and your staff runs those extracurricular fabulous programs?
Thank you, thank you. Great question.
And then I, just to follow up, if it's outside people coming in, are, do they go through background check?
Great question. It is, it is not outside people coming in. So if it is Drama Notebook, for example, we, we work with them, we curate whichever pieces curriculum we're going to bring in, they train our staff, and then we have internal trainers who will then, you know, monitor, observe, coach, either online or in person. But no, they're not outsiders coming in to deliver. We train our staff who have been background checked, who are employed by us, who are with their kids and ratio, who deliver the content. Thank you.
Hi, Janine Patel, 87 Stevens Avenue. I have a question. You keep saying that you do Bergen County, so...
I have. Go ahead.
Well, because that's my, because you said there is someone above you that is in charge of all you guys and you do Bergen County, so you keep saying you're present and there. So are you the person that will be here? And if not, is the person that's going to be here just like you, present, there, all the time?
Yes, yes. So our structure is this. So I'm the CEO at Alphabet and we have nine regional directors. Jeanette is one of them. Jeanette oversees our contracts in New Jersey. Then we have area managers like Robin throughout the state, okay? Once we are awarded the contract, we'll know exactly which area manager this will be assigned to, but I can assure you, I actually said to Jeanette on the phone yesterday when we were preparing for this, you have the most talented staff in the company. So there are three more very much like Robin. Robin is one of our superstars, but Kathy, who's over on the western side, wouldn't be assigned to this, she's in Haddonfield and she's way over that way, but she's, she's great. Magda, again, fabulous, she was our first area manager here, and then Marilyn is the other one. So yes, there will be Robin or someone like Robin overseeing a site director at each of the sites here. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our public comment section. Announcement of future meetings. Our next meeting will be February 16th. Executive at 6:30, regular meeting at 7:30, and then again, March 15th, same times, executive session at 6:30 and regular meeting at 7:30. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and those watching at home. Have a good evening.